Yeah, we just started it.
Okay, it's six ten. Over to you Chair.
Thank you very much and welcome to the Planning Commission meeting. It is Wednesday, September twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty five. I'm now going to call roll call for our regular scheduled virtue virtual meeting. Commissioner Jajic.
Present.
Commissioner Bush.
Present.
Commissioner Geiser.
Present.
Commissioner Riley.
I am present.
Commissioner Banka.
I am present also.
Very nice. Commissioner Walls? And Commissioner Hogan is indeed present. Um, we do have a quorum. The Pledge of Allegiance is not going to be sent tonight as this is a virtual meeting. Approval of the minutes for September ten, two thousand and twenty five. Did you all have an opportunity to read the minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
Were there any amendments or corrections?
No.
Oh.
The nun, the Vice Chair moves to approve the minutes as presented without objection. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Jajic. Any discussion? If not, minutes are approved. Tonight, we have two items in general business. Item eight A and item eight B. However, the applicant for item eight A has requested to withdraw their item from this evening's agenda and will resubmit at a later date. The Vice Chair moves to amend the agenda um with the one amendment to remove item eight A. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you very much. Any discussion on the motion to remove item eight A from the agenda? If not, roll call Commissioner Jajic. Um, approve. Commissioner Bush.
Approve.
Commissioner, let me see, Geiser.
Approve.
Commissioner Riley.
I approve.
All right, and Commissioner or Vice Chair Hogan also approves.
Commissioner Banka approves.
I'm so sorry, Commissioner Banka. I do not have them in front of me. Now I do. I'll read a summary of our policies and procedures for this evening's meeting. If you are also a speaker wanting to speak tonight, please pay attention to these instructions. Please make sure that your home or computer microphone is on mute unless you are speaking. The Planning and Zoning Commission meeting is a quad slide judicial hearing. There's no swearing in of those that will be given testimony, but it is presumed that all parties are telling the truth. When addressing the commission as an applicant or representative, please state your first and last name as well as the organization that you are representing. And additionally, state if you are an Aurora resident. If you're addressing the commission as a member of the general public for public testimony, please state your first and last name and if you are an Aurora resident. For each agenda item, there would be one initial presentation by staff. Afterwards, commissioners may ask questions of staff. Discussion of the agenda items by commissioners will be conducted only following a motion and a second. Following the staff presentation, the applicant or the representative may choose to make a presentation and answer questions. The applicant will have ten minutes for their presentation. Commissioners may ask questions of the applicant. Members of the public have also signed up to speak will take three minutes to speak on agenda items during the public comment period. It is asked that only new information be presented. The same argument should not be repeated. Commissioners may ask questions of the public following their comments. After public comments, the applicant will have five minutes to address any of the public comments. Commissioners may ask questions of the applicant. The Vice Chair will ensure that all commissioners have no further questions of the applicant or staff. The Vice Chair will then call for the question. After a motion has been made and seconded, the commissioners will then discuss the case amongst themselves. After discussion, the Vice Chair will call for the question. Commissioners are finders of fact and will be and will vote based upon their evaluation of the evidence presented as compared to code section one forty six. All rulings by planning commissioner are normally final. Exceptions are zoning amendments, zoning code amendments, comprehensive plan amendments that need city council approval. Discussion decisions by the commission may be appealed to city council by presenting a written appeal to the city manager within ten calendar days of the public hearing. City council also has the discretion to call up a case whether or not it is appealed. Notices for the virtual meeting were published, posted in the city website and development projects were posted with signs on the property. Notices were also emailed to adjacent landowners per city requirements. There's nothing known on the consent agenda. Brendan, is that correct? Yes, Brendan?
Uh, Chair, that is correct. Uh, and just an FYI, I think we, Melvin has dropped off, so be aware of that.
Hmm. We'll give him a moment, hopefully to get back. I still believe we do have a majority or a quorum.
Yes.
All right, then let's go ahead and proceed. Agenda item eight B. Title Urban Cottages Jewel Site Plan with Three Amendments. And I believe that Mr. Raba is the case manager and we look forward to your presentation. Mr. Raba, you're on.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Rashid Raba presenting for staff. Tonight for your review is a site plan with three adjustments. The applicant Urban Cottages LCC is requesting approval of a site plan on three point nine acres with fourteen duplexes facing East Jewel Avenue and sixteen duplexes facing a green court along the southern boundary of the site. Backgrounds and updates. On January the eighth, two thousand and twenty five, this application was presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission as a zoning map amendment and a site plan with five adjustments. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval of the zoning map amendment and the site plan was tabled indefinitely. Subsequently, the zoning map amendment was heard and continued at the city council, waiting for the site plan to come back to the Planning and Zoning Commissions. On March the third, two thousand and twenty five, the applicant held a virtual neighborhood meeting part of the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff. This is a site put of adjacent uses, two blocks from commercial uses of on Havana and it's located near schools and parks. The subject property lies within established neighborhood place type in Aurora Places Comprehensive Plan. The site is bonded by single family attached townhomes and detached residential development to the north. Havana Heights Pond Park is to the east, a large lot residential property to the west, and a single family detached residential development and a vacant land to the south. Here is a zoom in side photo. The site is adjacent to Town Homes Development across Jewel Avenue, two blocks from commercial uses on Havana Street. Seventeen adjacent property owners and twenty-three registered neighborhood organization were notified. A second neighborhood meeting was held on March third, two thousand and twenty five. Notice of hearing board and mailing were posted and sent. Comments were received during the public notice when it's sent and notice the sign when it's posted. This is a photo of public notice signs on the site. Update Proposal. From the January meeting minutes, the three reasons the site plan was tabled. First, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended that the applicant should complete an additional neighborhood meeting which the applicant had the second neighborhood meeting on March third, two thousand and twenty five. Second, reduce the number of adjustment requests which the applicant did. Third concern regarding the traffic which addressed by the city traffic engineering. The applicant made an updated submit and these are the highlighted of changes. Reduce the number of homes from thirty-six to thirty. Reduce the number of adjustment requests from five to three. Buildings four feet from the southern property line with additional landscaping. Traffic and drainage evaluated. When this project started on March fourteen, two thousand and twenty-two, it began with the site plan for thirty-six two multifamily dwelling units. After going through many reviews and adjustment to the site, the revised proposal proposal was submitted to the city, reviewed by staff, revised and reviewed a second time prior to scheduling the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing. The revised proposal include thirty duplexes with fourteen duplexes facing East Jewel Avenue and sixteen duplexes facing Green Court along the southern boundary of the site. A U-shaped private driveway or alley loops through the development connecting the East Jewel Avenue from one side of the site to the other. All units directly front into internal sidewalk that connect to Jewel Avenue. A twenty-five foot landscape buffer is provided along the eastern property line adjacent to the city-owned Havana High Pond Park and additional landscape buffer are also provided. The home facing south are separated from the south property line by approximately forty feet of landscape area. This proposal also included an outdoor common space located in the middle of the sixteen homes. The proposed duplex homes are two stories. Two stories homes are typical in this area. The elevation provide illustrate building massing materials and variety of colors that are consist with our requirements. Issues discussed and resolved during the review of the new site plan are the adjustments. The site plan proposed include three adjustment request. Front and rear setbacks. The number of attached dwelling on each side of the green court open space five allowed and a green court having direct frontage to the street. This is a reduction in the number of adjustment requested compared to the previous proposal, which had five adjustments. Planning staff support the three proposal adjustment in compliance with adjustment review criteria in the UDO. These adjustments are necessary to address the site constraint on this infill parcel related to the sides and limited street access. The outcome of this adjustment does not result in high density than most compliant green court. Additionally, the landscape buffer to adjacent property are wider than usual with over forty feet from the building to the property line to the south. The adjustments do not negatively affect the parents of the development from Jewel as homes along Jewel face that street. Existing homes to the south also view the front and homes rather than the side or rear. The adjustments request do not reduce architecture or landscaping requirement. Internally, the layout ensure all homes have access to the connected centrally located outdoor plaza. This proposal this proposal is on Collector Street and is expected to have a minimal impact on nearby local street. The development also providing guest parking spaces exceeding the minimum requirement of four. Relative lake of street furniture relative to the size of the property limit. The viable options without adjustment unless multifamily is pursued. The adjustment proposed are not producing a typical level of density and is less than Town Homes development across the street. Expand buffer. And isolated nature of this person limit the impact on adjacent properties. Design the building face the streets and neighborhood to the south and including more landscaping than the previous version. Pedestrian connection are proposed between all homes, common area and Jewel Avenue. This proposal exceed on the site parking requirement and will have little impact on nearby local streets. From the Aurora Comprehensive Plan, duplexes are primarily land use in the established neighborhood places type in this area. Relatively high density are supported on bigger street or the edge of place type. And in this case, the location has both. Approximately to all use to other users. This location is two blocks from commercial uses in Havana and is near school and a park. This is the site plan approval criteria. Overall, staff find I find in compliance with the site plan criteria in section one four six dash five point four point three point B point two point C of the Unified Development Ordinance side from the three adjustment because the application complies with the standard and criteria of the UDU and Aurora Place Comprehensive Plan. It can be supported by the city existing infrastructure and the applicant has proposed right way improvement on the adjacent right away and proposed water drainage and utility improvement to serve the development. Provides landscape buffer area alongside the furnish. The proposal protect and preserve the nature area by focusing uses in areas supported by comprehensive plan and by connecting the development to the existing Havana High Pond Park. Mitigate potential negative external effect on nearby uses through landscape buffers. Staff recommendation. Approval with condition to the site plan with pre-measure adjustment related to the building setbacks and configuration of the lot because the proposal comply with the requirement of the code section one four six dash five point four point three point B point two point C. Approval is subject to the following condition. Condition number one, resolution of outstanding technical issues prior to recording of site plan and issuance of any building permit. Condition number two, approved subject to approval by the city council of the zoning map amendment from RR to R two. And with that, I conclude my presentation and I'm here to answer any question you might have. Also, the applicant is present and has a presentation. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Commissioners, do you have questions of Mr. Raba? Yes, Commissioner Riley.
So when I reviewed your extensive report, I noted in there that there were several reasons for objections such as out of place, opposition, lack of preparation and confusion. My question are is or are my questions. Um, why were they all included in the packet and have they all been addressed or mitigated?
Thank you for your question. Those are comments that are coming from the neighborhoods and we're supposed to add them to the package as to show that we received comments and we're providing to the commissioners. And those comments, some of them were addressed when we had the second neighborhood meeting in March the third, two thousand and twenty-five.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further questions by the commissioners?
This is Commissioner Jajic.
Please go ahead, Commissioner Jajic.
The traffic report in the conclusion, it said sidewalks and curb and gutter should be per the city requirements are recommended on the property frontage. Is there any issue with the net more narrow frontage and five foot sidewalk that would cause a traffic concern along Jewel?
I will leave that question to Civil Engineering Traffic and they are with us tonight.
Okay, thank you.
This is Kendra Hanagami with the City of Aurora. Um, I think one of the comments in the neighborhood comments portion of the packet was incorrect. They are providing a six foot wide detached sidewalk to meet our typical collector section, not a five foot wide sidewalk, which is what that um comment from the neighborhood packet was received and that that meets our typical section and our expectation and matches the section to the east of this project.
Okay, thank you.
And this is Dean Kaiser from the Traffic Unit. Um, I did review obviously the traffic study and looked at the site plans as well. And based on what Kendra just explained, we have no concerns. There's no traffic impacts due to the curb line and the the access points being shown in that site plan.
Thank you for the clarification. Any other questions by the commissioners? I do have one question and it may be a legal question. So Ms. Lena, I'm assuming that you are on the line. My question is, at our January meeting, Planning Commission approved the recommendation for the zoning. Um, we are looking at site plan only tonight. Is that correct?
That is correct. Um, the question before you tonight is approval of a site plan with three adjustments. Um, the Planning Commission already recommended approval of the zoning map amendment to city council. Um, as you mentioned in January, that is currently continued with the city council, um, but is planning to be brought forward again in November um to city council. So correct, you are only hearing the site plan this evening.
Thank you very much for that clarification. Um, Rashid, I believe you said the applicant has a presentation. Applicant, if you would be so kind as to introduce yourself, you do have ten minutes for your presentation. Um, within nine minutes, I'm going to go like this so that you know to wrap it up.
Okay. Thank you, Chair Hogan. Um, hi every, hi Commissioners. I'm Alan Cunningham with PCS Group. I'm helping Urban Cottages with the planning and landscape architectural components of this. Uh, we're excited to be back before you tonight with the changes that we've made to this project. These improvements that you saw or improvements since you saw the plan back in January. With me tonight are Chase Stillman and Carl Nelson with Urban Cottages and Eric Pearson with Cage Civil. Um, so hopefully between us, we can answer any questions you might have. Next slide, please Rashid. Um, I'll go quickly through these first ones. At this point, I think you're familiar with Urban Cottages and their goal of being able to provide housing for all the modestly sized homes that are attainable and efficient and building them in areas where people like to work, eat, shop and play. And often this leads to infill sites such as the one that we're discussing this evening. Next slide, please. You saw the context from Rashid, so I'll go really quick. Obviously, uh, sites on the south side of Jewel slightly to the east Havana. So we'll go next slide, please Rashid. Uh, zooming in a little bit, this one shows you again where it sits directly adjacent to the Havana Heights Pond Park and and south of the Jewel Terrace's Town Homes. Next slide, please. So this one expands a little bit on the previous slide. I know you'd seen this before in January, but just wanted to show and add in those properties in proximity to this site that are multifamily or single family attached to demonstrate that our request before you is very much in the context of the neighborhood when when the its entirety is considered. As you can see here, there's multifamily communities in the darker color to the west towards Havana and then other single family attached in the lighter orange color also proximate to us and as mentioned directly north of us across Jewel. Um, as mentioned, the rezoning was recommended for approval by this commission and so I still thought this context was important and so wanted to leave this slide in. So next slide, please Rashid. Two more in terms of context, this one, the the properties highlighted in green and it also shows those properties that were previously in plan view and where they sit in proximity to this site. Next slide, please Rashid. Uh, this one is just more of a close up and it's looking um from north to left. So in the foreground of the images, the Jewel Terrace Town Home community that Rashid mentioned and then her site on the south side of Jewel directly across the road from it. Next slide. So let's dive into the specifics of the site plan. Um, as you know, at our previous hearing, you know, many things were conveyed that this infill site with topography, existing infrastructure surrounding it's not without its challenges. And so after another revision, we've come up with a plan that we believe works well for this transitional infill parcel um and also addresses, you know, many of the things that were brought up along the way as well as being compliant with the Aurora Places Comp Plan and especially the key housing for all policy within the city. As Rashid mentioned, the plan now includes thirty units in terms of fifteen paired home buildings for those thirty units, which is a a reduction of two from the previous plan, which was thirty-two. Um, as Rashid also indicated, the original plan was thirty-six. So it's been a twenty percent reduction in those units to get down to thirty. We've also included increased buffering to the neighboring properties, especially the ones on the south through a combination of setbacks, landscape and building orientation on the southern edge. It is dimensioned on there a little hard to see. Previously, there were buildings that sided to that property line and they were set fifteen feet away from it. Rashid had mentioned forty feet. I believe it's actually forty-five feet is the dimension now from that southern property line to those buildings. So triple what um that setback and buffer was previously. And from a parking perspective, all of the units have attached two garages and then there's also ten guest parking spaces which exceeds the the city requirement. Next slide, please Rashid. Just some color, he had showed some line drawing elevations. Here's a couple of, I actually have two slides, but just to give you an idea of the aesthetics of these alley loaded paired homes. These are slides with renderings of similar product from a different community. So there could be very slight adjustments at the building permit stage, but I think it gives you a good idea of the look and quality you could expect here. Uh, next slide, please Rashid. So while these are stylistically different, um, you can see that there still has lots of articulation, front porches for outside living, varying roof lines to bring some diversity even across these paired homes. Next slide. And in, oh yeah, and going through the project to this point, there had been a request made for a section so people could understand the grade change. So uh, this slide depicts that section. As you can see, uh, this is west facing, so um, the left side of it are the adjacent properties to the south of this property and then the right side is kind of proposed placement of the alley loaded homes. As you can see, the the homes to the south sit substantially higher than this site. So um, you know, I think they'll still, their more distant views shouldn't be significantly impacted. Obviously, the views into this site would be. But I think distant views, they sit up nice and high above this site. Next slide, please. So as I'm sure you'll recall when we were before you in January that, and as Rashid mentioned, there were five different adjustment requests. And so we've addressed those, reduced them by forty percent from five down to three, and I'll go through these now. The first one shown here is the request from the code that says that each green court dwelling shall have a different direct frontage on and pedestrian access to a street that includes on-street parking and sidewalks on both sides. So the key part about having this adjustment request is the that phrase direct frontage, which is somewhat contradictory because if the units were directly fronting on Jewel, they wouldn't in fact be green courts. But with the orientation of this site, the units in the back, they are considered green courts. And so in terms of addressing this, the changes made to the plan, we believe are a significant improvement because a large component of that section of code is that pedestrian access to a road with walks. And as you can see highlighted on this slide with the yellowish orange arrows, these units provide uninterrupted pedestrian access out to Jewel. So you know, we're actually think this is a great improvement to the plan and it relieves any conflict between the interior vehicular alley where the the cars take access to the garages and that pedestrian access. Next slide, please Rashid. Second one, as Rashid mentioned, pertains to setbacks. Um, as you know, within the code, um, in this R two zone district, the setbacks that are in there are As you know, within the code, in this R2 zone district, the setbacks that are in there are, I'd say more suburban in in nature, not really anticipating alley loaded homes. They have front setback of 20 feet and rear of 15 in that R2 zone district. As discussed with staff, as more traditional for alley loaded product, we're proposing to use the alley setbacks from the other portion of the UDO for small residential lot standards, which are used in other parts of the city and traditional. And staff agreed that these setbacks are more in keeping with an infill development with alley loaded product associated with it. And those equate to a 10-foot front setback with a five-foot porch setback, side setbacks of five feet for building separation and then zero, obviously, on that internal of a paired home and reared setbacks from the alley of three feet, all of which are being met or exceeded. Next slide, please. So the third adjustment pertains to that section of code, which for infill situations says that no group of attached green court dwellings may include more than five dwellings on each side of the green court. And as discussed with staff, the proportions of this site in terms of where some access restrictions are, are what led to to this request. And as a means of mitigating it somewhat, as mentioned, we've removed two units from the overall plan and then adjusted that orientation to to greatly increase the buffer to the neighboring properties to the south from previously 15 feet up to 45. And then additionally, we've included a a central open space breaking up those green court units on the south so that there's a central gathering space that's that's commonly available for the residents. Next slide, please. So before wrapping up, just wanted to show you a couple of views of how we think this neighborhood is going to live. So the key map on the left shows where the views are taken from. View A in the upper left is from the western corner of the property and shows front architecture towards Jewel on that interface to the community. And view B in the bottom right is looking towards the homes along Jewel. And it depicts the the detention pond that's there, so that serves as a buffer and sets these back from Jewel Ave, but still having that front architecture to the street because they're alley loaded. Next slide, please. So same thing with the key map of view A in the upper left is looking west along the southern edge of the property and showing that increased buffer that exists as well as the privacy fence that will be added there. And view B in the lower right is taken from within that southern boundary and shows a usable turf area within the green court open space that's along the front of those alley loaded homes. Next slide, please. So in summary, I didn't see the wave yet, so hopefully I'm on time, I'm getting it. So in summary, we're we're happy to bring this plan back before you. As mentioned, this one has paired homes to the tune of 30 units. So a reduction of two from the last time you saw it and and a reduction of six or 20% from the original plan that was presented. The alley loaded nature of these homes orients attractive front architecture to the periphery, both to adjacent properties and to Jewel. And with that allows for increased setbacks and landscape buffers to the adjacent properties. And then along with these changes comes the reduction of previously requested five adjustments down to three that we've worked with staff on and and staff agrees with and is recommending approval of. So with that, I conclude our presentation. And as mentioned, there's members of our team here to answer any questions you might have. Thank you very much.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Commissioners, do you have questions? Please, up the applicant, Commissioner Banka. Oh, you're unmute.
I am, sorry. Thank you. I'm guessing that this will be an HOA community with the homeowners association.
I believe that's the plan. Chase or or Carl from Urban Cottages can confirm, but it will be because with the private alley though, it'll be needed to, you know, provide maintenance and plowing and that sort of thing.
Got it. And so will each side of the duplex be responsible for their own, oh, I'm sorry, exterior maintenance and roof? You know, or is it, I mean, is it going to be a situation where the builder does a beautiful job going in, but homeowners paint things different colors a few years down the road? And and the roofs, one roof's good, one's not so good? Any?
So I don't know if those details have been worked out yet. They'd be part of HOA documents. Usually they have what's called a party wall agreement with paired homes. That is basically an agreement between the owners of either side to make sure that maintenance is occurred and kept up with. And that's part of documents that is pretty common with paired homes that are available even prior to purchase. But, you know, I think any of those maintenance details will be worked out as things move forward.
Got it. Thank you.
Other questions for the applicant?
This is Commissioner Jacek. Paired homes, can the owner of the homes rent it out? And if so, how do you regulate that?
I mean, again, Carl or or Chase, if you want to chime in, I mean, my typical take is these would be fee simple, so they're for sale. So once someone buys a home, just like in any neighborhood, if they have a single family home, unless there's city ordinances or something that would preclude them from renting, it would be within their rights to rent the home if they wanted to.
Okay, thank you.
I see our attorney's hand is up.
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair Hogan. I was just going to remind the commission to stay within the criteria of the application before us, which is a site plan. And the ownership of the property is not a criteria.
Thank you very much for that reminder. Other questions from the commissioners?
Stayed none. Do we have someone for the public that would like to speak?
Yes, Vice Chair, we do have three individuals that have signed up to speak. The first is Sheena Shabatura. I apologize if I've mispronounced your last name, Sheena. I will unmute you now.
By way of reminder, Sheena, please state your first and last name. Please let us know if you are a resident of Aurora. And please know that you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Commission. My name is Sheena Shabatura, and I am an Aurora resident. As we spoke, the last time we were together was in January for the rezoning of this site. Now I'm motivated to be respectful of everybody's time and jump right in, offering only new information through just a few individuals tonight like myself. So first, I'd like to acknowledge that the comparison between the unrest happening within our city and the issues we face with this project leaves us really humbled with better awareness about the disparities and inequalities that persist in our society. While we and our neighbors have been standing up against the disrespectful and woeful preparation of PCS Group or Urban Cottages, it pales to other Aurora residents who are standing up for much more, for murdered family members, for accountability, for fairness, preservation of cultures and for solutions to longstanding tensions. From the get-go in 2022, we've witnessed insolent behavior from the applicant, their agent and their team. In 42 months and with only two neighborhood meetings, the applicant reduced their site plan by only three structures, removed a playground and a bike rack and forced in a green court to an already squeezed in row of homes along our south border. I'm sorry, our north border, because the city said you can't call them green court homes without an actual usable green court. So they just threw one in. The applicant is quoted in their seventh submission from August as saying, quote, "We've explored every conceivable site plan option," unquote. But the impression is that we get that they're doing the bare minimum for not only the city's feedback, but their unimaginative site plan as well. Currently, I believe they're working on their eighth submission and had just how we just had our fifth city council continuance on the rezoning from the RR to R2. And little has been accomplished since January. We've witnessed, it's just messy, amateurish, unimpressive, impractical, out of touch and quite concerning that this is the best they can come up with for our backyard. Do they even deserve to go further, I wonder? By analyzing their former submissions, their inattentiveness and other past offensive behavior, it helps paint a picture of what they'll be like to work with in the future. I mean, even the name of the retention park on their site plan is wrong. So from our perspective, PCS Group and Urban Cottages do not leave us wanting more. They leave us feeling deflated, dejected, dejected and speechless at the disrespect shown to the neighbors and city staff. But ultimately, it's your choice where they're allowed to go from here. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheena, for your comments. Do we have anyone else signed up? Miss Michelle?
Yes, we do. We also have Kyle Weber. So Kyle Weber, I have one moment technical difficulties. You should now be able to unmute yourself, Kyle.
And please state your first and last name for the record, as well as whether or not you are an Aurora resident. And Kyle, please, it's your three minutes.
Michelle, I'm not hearing anything from Kyle.
I am not hearing anything from Kyle either. So Kyle, oh, I do see that you have raised your hand, Kyle. If you look on your screen, if you're having difficulties unmuting, you should be able to see on the right-hand side the image of a small microphone with a line through it. You should be able to click that to unmute. Kyle, I am going to disable your mic for the time being while we go on to our next individual from the public, which is Gary Peterson. One moment, Gary. Gary, when you're ready, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Go ahead, Gary.
Gary, I do see that you've unmuted yourself, but I am not hearing you. I'm so sorry, Gary, but we are still not able to hear you. I'm going to disable your mic for the time being. I'm a Miss Vice Chair, Sheena has raised her hand. I believe Kyle might be with her. Is it okay if I unmute her?
Yes, please.
Sheena, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you, Kyle.
Kyle?
Awesome.
One second, we got to turn off the volume on my computer. There we go. Good evening, my name is Kyle Weber. I am an Aurora resident and I oppose this development and rezoning request. First off, we recently found a story about the Highline Financial Group filing a suit claiming contractual fraud in the amount of $2.1 million. They claim corruption and a cooked up scheme to defraud the plaintiff. PCS Group is named as a defendant. We would like to know where PCS Group is getting their funding from and are they going to attempt to defraud us like they allegedly did with the Highline? Why does PCS have no finished developments to show on their website? Quote-unquote website that is just only a homepage. The neighborhood has a realistic fear of them going bankrupt and stopping project midstream. Same thing happened two blocks away in a cul-de-sac on Kingston Court. The builder ran out of money and three stunt lots are still sitting vacant. Another issue is the first responders access. Where are the fire hydrants going to be located? Can hoses reach? What is the turning distance that is needed for the fire trucks and ambulances? And are they going to be able to get to the units when needed? This private road, oh, excuse me, they're they're calling it an alley now. What width is needed? And is there enough room when the cars are actually parked on these side roads in their designated spots? What or who has played a role in the inconsistent reuse of project numbers on public notices? Also, why were the emails to the most recently listed contact person on the notice, Michael Liam Hogan, being sent back undeliverable? Again, where is their funding coming from? And will it allow for completion of these intensive retaining walls, retention ponds, let alone their absurd plan and future maintenance of the walls and pond? We would like to know what the plan is for maintaining these large retaining walls that are planned along the south side of the property. We have testimony from neighbors and residents that have large retaining walls that state that they need to shell out a lot of money to keep them maintained. With a lot of runoff comes a lot of erosion, we know that firsthand. What will be the effect of flooding in this area from the houses to the south that drain directly into the area of the development? That being said, have they checked into home insurance companies that'll ensure they'll cover these homes? We have testimony that at least most of them do not offer coverage when building next to a pond and in a flood potential area. Havana is becoming the gas station mile, earning the nickname Carvana. So it seems hypocritical that the applicant is scheming for limited parking spaces and limited alley when gas stations are popping up on every block. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Kyle. Michelle, do we have one more speaker?
Yes, I am going to try Gary once again. So Gary, I have made you a presenter if you wish to try and unmute yourself and speak.
Okay, I've done that.
We can hear you now, Gary. Thank you.
Yes. So Gary, please state your first and last name and whether or not you are an Aurora resident. And you have three minutes. Go ahead.
Well, my name is Gary Pedersen. I am a Aurora resident. Actually, I'm a abutting property owner who was never informed of anything by the city or by the developer of any meeting. But beside all that, I first like to thank the process for allowing me to speak on this issue. I would also like to thank the commissioners for volunteering their time to the residents of Aurora. You are the initial gatekeepers of development in our city. That's no easy task. You deserve respect for performing a very sensitive role within the operations of the city. Thank you very much. For my lot of time, I'm going to talk about the red flags. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on that. You're probably aware of those and it's been presented to you and you've read the literature. I would like to echo something that Commissioner Riley said at his June 9th interview meeting with the city council. Commissioner Riley emphasized the importance of community involvement, noting that effective governance requires active engagement from residents, suggesting that better education and outreach could foster greater participation in the process. I applaud you, Commissioner Riley, for that statement because I think that's true. And I would imagine and hope that the panel shares the same philosophy as Commissioner Riley. To that point, we had 225 signatures from this collective neighborhood that was presented as opposing this development. And that is an example of really strong neighborhood participation and a collective effort to try to reach this commission and let them know that we do not want this development in our neighborhood. So I'm asking that key to this whole process is that you hear this neighborhood. Commissioner Riley, you made it a point to mention that that's important. It is important that you hear the message from these petitioners that we do not want this development. Don't be swayed by some slick professional performance that you saw here tonight. They can make it look very good with glossy overheads. But the reality is this neighborhood has to live in that and we do not want that. So I know that you're going to do the best for us on this decision and I appreciate your time very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Gary. Michelle, do we have anyone else that wishes to speak on this item?
We do not, Miss Vice Chair.
I'd like to close this portion of the public hearing and entertain a motion on item 8B, please. Do we have a motion from a commissioner on item 8B?
This is Commissioner Jacek. I'll start it up. Agenda item 8B, Site Plan with Adjustments. Based on the staff recommendation, the presentation and discussions at this evening's public hearing, I moved to approve the site plan with two conditions and three adjustments related to building setback and configuration of lots because the proposal complies with the requirement of Code Section 146-5.4.3.b.3.c of the Unified Development Ordinance for the reasons stated in the staff report. Approval to be subject to the following conditions. Resolution of outstanding technical issues prior to recreation of site plan and issuance of any building permits. And number two, approval subject to approval by city council of the zoning map amendment from R2 to R2.
And before I have a second, I saw Brandon's hand was raised because I do believe the applicant may have an opportunity to respond. Is that correct, Brandon? Is that correct, Brandon?
That was not the main reason. I was going to ask that Rashid, if I may ask Rashid to go ahead and put up the slide with the criteria next to the findings there. But I do believe you're correct that the applicant would have the opportunity to follow up on anything that came up during the public hearing as well.
Thank you very much. Mr. Cunningham, would you like to respond to the residents that spoke?
Thank you. I think, I mean, there was obviously some opinions expressed there. I did hear, I think, two things worthy of response. The first was a question regarding maintenance of the retaining walls. And those would fall under the purview of the HOA, just like the alley and other aspects. And then there was question about fire access and the fire department's always a referral agency that reviews all of the plans to make sure that turning radius and where no parking signs are and everything is adequate for fire access. So just wanted to respond to those two things and thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we have a motion to approve item eight B. Is there a second, please?
I still second.
Commissioner Bush seconds. Discussion. Commissioners, let's say you.
This is Commissioner Jacek. This, this type of an application is always hard for me as I try not to place myself in the shoes of a neighbor, although I am a neighbor, not of this, but I'm a neighbor of Aurora, but not of this Havana Heights. But we are as commissioners, finders of fact and we have to go based on the criteria, pivotal criteria in comparison to section 146. And that's really hard for me because I know the neighbors dislike something, they would rather fix some other kind of development. But that's not what we're here to do. We're here to look at the site plan and make sure it complies with section 146.
Thank you, Commissioner Jacek. Any other responses from commissioners?
I would like to thank Commissioner Jacek because she's absolutely right.
I see a lot of work put into this development by both the neighborhoods as well as the applicant. I think that the applicant has transformed their site plan. I will be submitting this because I do feel like it hits the development criteria. I also want to thank Shayna and Kyle and Gary for their comments. Please know that should this development pass by this commission, it doesn't mean that your comments haven't been very valuable to this process. So thank you. Any other comments? We have a motion and a second I will call roll call. Commissioner Jacek.
Approve.
Commissioner Bush.
Approve.
Commissioner Geiser.
Approve.
Commissioner Riley.
I approve.
Commissioner Banka.
Approve.
And Commissioner Hogan also approves. Thank you again very much for your presentation. We look forward to this project breaking ground. Next, we have public invited to be heard on non-agenda items. Ms. Michelle, do we have anyone that would like to be heard on non-agenda items?
Miss Vice Chair, we do not have anyone signed up to speak on non-agenda items.
All right, excellent. Comments from any of the commissioners before we get into reports? My one comment is for Commissioner Riley. For the first time I met him in person on Tuesday in the pouring down rain. It was the first time that I'd seen him in a hat and without a bow tie. So truth be told, it didn't dawn on me and then it did. And I was all smiles for the opportunity to meet him in person. So I hope that you all have that opportunity soon.
Thanks for inviting me too, as a retired Marine and having been to Korea. That was a worthwhile event. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments by the commissioners? If not, we're going to our planning division manager report. Brandon, you're up.
Thank you, Commissioner Brandon Camerata with the planning department. I think I'll just follow up on some upcoming meetings. I'll say unfortunately, we don't have anything scheduled for October 8th in terms of any development activity to put before you. So it's likely that we will not have a meeting for that date. And then secondly, I know we've been trying mightily to finalize our study sessions for the end of the year and yet another hiccup. And so for 10/22, which was when we were going to try to do the appeals discussion or the motions discussion and just trying to get better and trying to work on things as a group. We have a school that needs to get that date as well. And so I don't really have a great alternative date. I can work with Commissioner Hogan offline. But we can certainly see how sometimes a school will go reasonably quickly and we can see how far we get on the appeals. And go from there, or we can try to squeeze something in, but we're kind of running out of time, at least until the year turns.
All right, Brandon, you and I can talk about that offline. I believe that I will be in Korea on the 22nd. So, and I would prefer the discussion. You know, I'm fine with reviewing the school. I would like the other discussion if we can. We'll look into November, but we'll catch us online. Any further update on any either admin approvals or anything from council?
Let's see, admin approvals, let's see. We had, I think, two. So one was Piccadilly Crossing. And so that would be an industrial site, not directly part of Stafford. So Stafford is there roughly at Piccadilly and Colfax, south of Colfax, west of Piccadilly. And then this would be all the way down to the bottom near Old Sixth Avenue and Stephen D Parkway. And there's, I think they annexed parcel and have developed another industrial piece there. And then Prairie Point, which is way down south, south central part of the city, used to be called King's Point and those sort of projects. And another site plan for residential development down there. So mostly single family development on those projects. That is the update. As far as city council, I think it was broached today that, you know, the cottages rezone has been postponed, I believe, until November 17th. And so that is still on council's docket.
All right.
That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. Ms. Lena, you are up.
No report from me this evening, Vice Chair Hogan.
All right. Any last minute comments, suggestions, woohos by anybody? All right, seeing none. I missed the kitty tonight, Ms. Gail. I didn't see the kitty walking across.
Yeah, I'm not sure kitty went because she was not bugging me. She was ripping the papers off the printer earlier.
Oh, dear.
They come out, she grabs them.
All right. Thank you again for your time and your efforts tonight. We will see you in a couple of weeks. Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.